Matt, can you hear us?
Matt, can you hear?
I haven't even watched any Star Trek for like a month.
Hey, Matt, can you hear me?
I'm sort of feeling a little bit wonky.
I always do.
Hey, Matt, are you there? Alderman, Grimmer.
The third quarter, man. Can we just skip the third quarter and play the fourth and the first one twice?
Can you hear, Matt?
Yep, thank you.
Good. All right, welcome to the City of Delphide Common Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Steve, could you help us out with the roll call, please?
Certainly.
Hold up person Saloga.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Valdi.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Grimmer. Are you there, Grimmer? Matt, can you hear me?
He cannot hear you.
I'm guessing not.
Wait, so he can't hear anyone?
Yeah.
I'll come back to him. He's here. Casson.
Present.
And Iker.
Here.
And then Mayor Atwell.
Present.
And then Minister Haftner.
Here.
All right. Can you hear now? All right.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to item four, Special Order of Business. Presentation by Delphide Citizens for Responsible Growth Regarding Economic Development in the City of Delphide and Follow-Up Discussion Regarding the Same with the Common Council. Come on up, gentlemen. Give us your names and addresses and...
Dave Ziegler, 166 Fieldstone Road.
And I'm David Simon, 180 North Fieldstone Road.
So we've been here a few times, talking to the Common Council, talking to planning commissions, and we just wanted to kind of touch base with you guys again, let you know that we're still here and interested. Just as a refresher, our group formed some time ago, about a year and a half ago, to try to help the community, businesses, and also the city government to work together smoothly so that we could get more economic growth. And we're all aware of some of the problems that we have right now in our city with our budget deficits and areas of empty buildings. So our goal really was to try to get this business community a little bit more alive. We want to also do this by promoting a sustainable type of economic system throughout the city and raise awareness within the city to the different businesses that are available here for people to enjoy. We felt that there was a need to kind of bridge a gap between companies like the Hendricks Corporation and city government to try to get a better understanding and a more of a sense of collaboration between government and business, and I think that we were able to accomplish that over our short time that we've been in existence. We're especially excited with what's happening right now with Hendricks' recent purchase and the opportunities that that presents to the City of Delphide. I'll let Dave take it from there.
Yeah, so let me say first off, you know, our group has always been very attuned to what makes Delphide unique. And we're not, you know, just rubber stamp, approve every potential development that ever gets proposed. That's not at all what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is promote, I guess, offer a voice in favor of development, in favor of the kinds of development that we think is necessary to maintain what's unique about Delphide. And all of us as part of our coalition have always felt strongly that, you know, not, you know, I'm thinking about the 25-story apartment building in Wauwatosa that's getting in the news right now. But that, you know, it's not all development is good. It's the right kind of development for the city that we need to keep preserving what's unique about it, to maintain the restaurants, to maintain the amenities, and frankly, to maintain a budget that is sustainable is really critical. And, you know, our perspective on this was, for a long time, we saw a pretty small, we thought, minority view in the community that had a very loud no voice, kind of a reflexively no voice for any kind of development, and that was concerning. And we felt that that did not really represent the majority of the citizens, and we really wanted to at least provide a more representative voice on development issues. So that's what we've been doing. We've been, as you know, some of you know, we've been present at a lot of the hearings on some of the big projects in town. We've been supportive of the 705 Genesee Project, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a second. But, you know, part of what we're trying to do is also maintain and improve the communications between developers and local businesses and the city, which frankly, from our perspective, has not historically been as good as it should be. So I wanted to talk briefly about some of the issues that we've flagged where we think the city can improve. I think I'm going to hyperventilate through my mask. I've never actually had to talk at this length through a big, thick piece of talk and maybe a paper bag or something. Do we have EMTs?
We have the best in the county.
All right, good. We can still afford that.
Yes.
So look, you know, we're not economic development consultants. We don't, we're not here to offer, you know, magic bullets or a particular plan or a particular program to try to deal with this. That's not, I mean, we're, you know, Dave's a doctor, I'm a lawyer. We don't, we don't know, we don't know all the answers. But let me share with you, perhaps to generate some discussion, some of what we have observed in terms of issues, potentially concerns about the way the city has historically approached economic development. One thing is sort of proactivity. We don't think the City of Delphide has been very good at seeking out and nurturing the right kind of development for the city. And, you know, when you contrast that to some of what our neighbors have done, Oconomock in particular comes to mind, we think that's a real weakness. And, you know, we recognize that there are limits, we're resource constrained, and there are things we can do and can't do, but we think the city could be and should be more proactive. I think another issue that has been concerned is just how friendly the city process has been to development projects. And, you know, from watching the 705 project from beginning to end, my view, and I think the view of our group, is that the city didn't acquit itself particularly well throughout that process. It took too long, communication with the developer was not good, and I recognize that's a two-way street, but I think it was, it could certainly have been improved. You know, we're now in a situation where, having taken well over two years to get that project approved, you know, things changed, and now we're left with a very uncertain future for that project, and I think that's concerning. You know, I think the staff work, frankly, was not very good. I think information was not provided to the Hendricks Group on a timely basis. I think there was a lot of moving targets, and I think, I think that's something that ought to be looked at and improved. I can say, just from our limited experience, there have been some significant positive steps in that direction. I think Amy, from what we've seen, has been a real improvement in terms of staff work. I think that's something we should be commended for, but I think that could be done, more could be done. And, you know, I think part of the lesson of 705 is also just attitude and enthusiasm. And having been between the city and Hendricks, I think it's pretty clear that Hendricks never really felt like the city was supportive of their project. Fair or not, you know, again, I understand there's a lot of communications and different perspectives on those communications, but I think there's not a real sense of enthusiastic, positive, nurturing attitude from the city to developers, and I think that can go a long way. I think that's something Oconomock has done well and has attracted the kind of development they want, which isn't necessarily the kind of development we want, but it has been effective in that regard. So I guess those are, those are sort of things we've flagged that we'd like to see work better. We'd like to see, you know, again, more, more positive attitude towards development, more transparency, better communication. Our group, you know, we think we can add value, and we've talked to Tom and Kent about sort of offering our services. We have a database, we communicate with citizens, we have representatives for the local business community. We'd like to help, you know, improve that communication, to do whatever we can to facilitate, you know, helping achieve these goals, which I think we all share, to have good, smart additional development. And, you know, as Dave said, this St. John's Project with Hendricks, I think, provides a real opportunity for us as a city to really show some future forward-looking perspective, to show an ability to be creative, to think of ways to really, it has, it has the potential to transform, I think, the downtown, and it's something we ought to be taking seriously and investing time and energy into. So again, we're, we're really a cheerleader more than anything else, and we appreciate having the opportunity to share our perspective with you. We want to help. We've got people who are motivated on these issues, who really want to help, and we'd like to try to advance the ball. I think we, we all sort of share, I think, a vision. We all moved to Delphide for different reasons, but there are core things about this community that we all love and we want to preserve. And maintaining the status quo, not changing, not developing, not growing, you know, that's not an option, right? The world's changing. If we're not, if we're not being proactive, we're going to lose, we're going to lose what we love about this place. So we're committed to it. We want to help, and again, we're, we're open. We'd love to hear from you what kinds of things we can do to advance this set of objectives and, you know, use our resources, use our enthusiasm, use our relationships however we can.
Yeah, well said. Now you know why he's a liar, right? He's got the words. Yeah, I think that, like Dave just said, I think that this whole thing with St. John's is a reset. You know, this is a chance to look at how you view your role in government. You know, I think the role ought to be to people like the Hendricks and other companies that want to come in here is, how can we help you versus here's a whole bunch of hoops to jump through so that maybe you can get approval? And it's a, it's a change in who serves who, and so I guess that would be my goal, that we could be enthusiastic and move forward. We really need this for the city.
Yeah, I think you guys bring up excellent points, and certainly ones I know the council takes seriously. And I think you alluded to some of the changes that have taken place over the last few years since when the Hendricks development first started. And, you know, the city, you know, as far as the mayor is concerned, would like to partner with you guys to, to help achieve those objectives as well, because I believe they're objectives that we all as a community have in common. You know, it's about smart development. It's not about just any development. It's about smart development that we, you know, can get a large majority of people behind to support, right? Because people agree that, you know, it meets our comprehensive plan and our master plan and our zoning, and if it doesn't, then the tweaks are reasonable and things that can be accepted. So, yeah, I, I'm really glad you guys came forward today, and I'm hoping the council, you know, shares their comments and asks them any questions. You know, I think one of the reasons they've asked to come here is to have that two-way communication. So it's not them and us, it's more of the we, right? So please, I hope you take that opportunity.
I'll weigh in and say that thanks for bringing these things up, because, yeah, there's, there are a lot of hoops we can't get rid of as far as any kind of development, because it's hardcoded in our law, in our zoning code, and that's, that's any community. So the issue is really how do we change a perception that, that we're willing to embrace a development that fits and really work with people, the community and a developer, into, into making them see eye to eye as far as, you know, how things, what order things need to occur in, and how this does in fact meet the expectations of the community, like the group that you're talking to and different people, and, and how there may be objections and how we either overcome them or, or change hearts and minds about, you know, something new, because that's really the reflex, like you mentioned, is, it's like, what? No, that doesn't fit, you know, stuff like that is kind of an instant reaction. So, yeah, I think with, with the networking that you're doing and the way you're communicating is going to be a big asset to the city and as well as anybody with an idea that seems plausible and makes sense. And if there's something that needs to change, like with Hendricks, things changed to accommodate something that was a little bit of a compromise at certain, certain times, but we needed to change a law, and it does take a little bit of time and due process. So the perception, the perception, the certain perception that this is not a development-friendly community should change, because I do understand that some people view it as the answer's going to be no, and you're, you know, you're going to be fighting and not cooperating and not planning and not, not winning, you know, and so I appreciate what you're trying to do.
Tim, if I don't, if you don't mind, can I just make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
I think that's all fair. You know, the zoning, the change of law that was required with Hendricks is, I think, a really good example of sort of what I was talking about before. I mean, that, that was an issue that was not adequately identified early enough by the parties. You know, we had, we had, I think, almost a year of discussions with Hendricks before anybody raised this issue of, oh, wait a second, we might need to change, you know, change the code. And that, I thought was unacceptable. I mean, that, that's, when I talk about poor staff work, that's the kind, you know, there are rules, and there should be rules, and there should be a process. There are good reasons why we have the processes that we have. I completely agree with you. But making sure they're running smoothly, making sure they're transparent to the developer, making sure that the developer isn't told different things at different times by different people, those are the kinds of things we can control and should control and should do better. The other, the other thing I just would say is, just your comment is not directly responsive to that, but it just reminded me, and I think another thing that we would put on the table is, you know, it's not particularly helpful to this process for every member of the planning commission and every council member to be an amateur architect and designer. I mean, we have codes, we have standards, especially in historical downtown. I believe strongly in them, but I think, again, Hendricks, that's not, that's not the only project, and I don't want to keep coming back to it, but it just provides such a good example. I mean, that, that desire by a number of people to redesign their building down to what trim they have around their windows is, it doesn't send them a particularly good and positive message. So, you know, again, it's always balance, right? I mean, there's a balance of process and substance. There's a balance of, you know, making sure that, that structures fit within the, you know, the surrounding neighborhood and meet our criteria, all of which we support. But, you know, I think, I think our perspective is, we've maybe moved a little too far in one direction. We need to move a little bit more back to the middle on those.
Agreed. No, I, I've contended that I didn't sign up for any of these positions to decorate the city. But, you know, following the code, it should be black and white, and at times it hasn't been, and we've really worked hard to change certain things about the code for, we've been working on all these fun things like fences, setbacks.
Floor area ratio.
Floor area ratios to try to, you know, where, where the shoreline front edge is measured. So these things, and it's, some of it's with staff change, some of it's just out of a necessity to make things that should be black and white, black and white. So those are identified day one. And so, so this has all been duly noted, and it stinks that someone had to go through an arduous process to help us uncover a couple of those, and it's not just Hendricks, it's been other people too. So anyways, points well made.
I have a couple of questions. You used two terms that I'd like you to clarify for me. One, sustainable, and the other one you have in your group's name, Delphide Citizens for Responsible Growth. How do you define both?
Well, I mean, I think, I think I did. I mean, you know, the idea is, right, development is positive, but not all development is, is right for Delphide. So, I mean, it's, it's consistent with the community. It's, you know, obviously different for the historic downtown than it is for on the 83th Quarter. I mean, it's consistent with the, with the, with the comprehensive plan, you know. I mean, all of that stuff is reasonable and sustainable, we think. We have to preserve our natural resources. That's part of the thing. Most of us are here, at least in some part, because of the beauty of the area, right? We, we need to sustain that and preserve that. So, I mean, I think it's, it's hard to sort of give you a, like, a precisely lawyerly definition of those two terms, but I think the idea is...
Well, I'm an environmental science teacher, so I would, I would root for an environmentally scientifically accurate rather than whether or not it meets the purview of the law, but sustainable means just that. It can be held in its constant state without unduly taxing the environment or other sources, so that was...
And sustainable economically too, right? It's not going to be...
Absolutely.
...an empty building in 10 years that everybody's going to be, right? I mean, same, yeah.
No, I totally, I totally get that. I just, you know, I think it's critical, and that's always been my thing. And I'm going to pick on my friend who's in the audience, Jackie Leiden, who used this term a long time ago, is that good ecology is good business. If you have, one of the things that draws people here, and one of the things that makes our property values so good is that it is such a desirable place to live. Our lake is clean and beautiful, and we are not inundated with invasive species, and we want to keep it that way. And so part of us being maybe a bit problematic or frustrating for folks who want to come in and think they have a good idea is, and it is, it does need improving, I agree completely, that we want to protect that. When someone tells me, you guys are a pain, I go, good, we should be. We are fighting to protect this, because I don't want runaway growth. I don't want Blue Mountain Road in Delphide, or I don't want high-rise apartments up like they have them in Oconomock. I don't like that, you know, so I kind of, I want to find that balance. And one other very quickly is, I was quite taken aback when one Saturday morning, I'm a gym rat, and I spend pretty much every day, at some point in my day, over at B Fitness, and I love it, and I'll plug it, it's great. But I walked in there one morning, and I saw this big sign saying, "Transforming Downtown Delphide", and it was this prototype drawing, and I thought, I, I've never seen that before, and I don't know anything about it, and I felt a little railroaded. So I, it was an affront to me as a common council member, and someone, I'm pretty smart, and I do read, you know, things I get and try to, I had no idea, but it was presented as if it had been approved, and that was not a best move either. If we're going to armchair quarterback us, I'm going to armchair quarterback you. A little bit right there, like, woo. But I think what happened is that we did find a common ground, and I think I was really positively impressed with some of the redesign and the things that ultimately came. So it was not elegant in process, but I think ultimately, I think we came to a good solution that met the codes, we made some adjustments, and the Hendricks Corporation made some adjustments, and I'm, I was very pleased. I'm just hoping that it does break ground.
Right. Listen, I, I mean, I agree with everything you said, and, and in terms of, you know, obviously, you're not armchair quarterbacking me, because I'm not Hendrick, we're not Hendricks.
Yeah, no, I know, but...
But obviously, you know, I think it's, I think it's worth just, you know, noting that from our perspective anyway, I mean, Hendricks is the most, you know, the most important private entity in town, and, and we're, you know, thank goodness they're here, and they've done so much good. And, you know, have they been perfect? No, but I think part of what we'd like to try to do is help strengthen that relationship, because it's the most important relationship, I think, of any, you know, city private, you know, entities that we're going to have in our, in our lifetimes.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're, we're given that.
Well, I'll say something. I haven't brought this up before, but I just think we should consider maybe looking at a new master plan. Not a changed master plan, but it's been 30 years. And when I was mayor 30 years ago, I didn't bring it up, some of our planners did, and there were a lot of folks in town upset, and now that's the plan everyone refers to. And one of the arguments against it is, well, we just did it in 1976, and we did another one in 197... and we did another one in 1970, and there was one done in the 60s. I don't know the date. And if you pull all of them out, they still read about the same. But the issue back then was, we had a few stores out at 83 and 994, and we had 104 acres of undeveloped land that was rapidly developing. And I drove to Madison at the time, and they were plowing down Johnson Creek. I mean, there used to be the same hills we had around 83 and 994. And I'm not going to claim this, because it was on the list of issues that we should deal with. And had we not updated that plan at that time, it would look like Johnson Creek. And now you're faced with a new developer, which, who has a lot of money, and now has control over a lot of undeveloped land, and they have something in mind. And part of that process is to interview those folks and say, you know, what, what do you want? And then you do it without specifically site specific, you just come up with general themes. And that's what we did on 83 and 994. We came up with themes, and you see them in the signage and the lighting in the parking lots. In fact, I hate to pick, because I like QuickTrip, but they, somehow their lighting didn't fit the package that every other place has. They got that one by. But, but the point is that 30 years is a long time. And I am worried about 83 and 994, because it has as aged as another 10 years. That, that's not the focus that you have, but-
It's 12 years.
That corner, we need to know what's going to happen next there. And there really isn't any land anymore, but at some point, you're going to get redevelopment proposals. And it's another one where, what do we want? What are we doing with the Highway 83 corridor? Again, we have the Lake Country Compact, that's 22 years old. And, yeah, our, our neighbors are developing, and Hartland and O'Connell Walk are developing in a way that we wouldn't. And we wouldn't. And that's well settled. But I do think we should think about hiring someone and spending the money. And you're talking 100 grand. You're talking about a moratorium on development for a year or two. You may also have outcomes that some people won't like, but if we decide strategically, that's what we're going to do. And that's the scary part. But I just think, at this point, it is kind of set up where people have to kind of guess what will get approved.
We did it in 2018.
And, and I'm one of them. We, we own some land, too, and it's like, I, I don't know what, I don't, I'm one of these, we don't want to spend any money. So, but it's not for me to decide. It's more the Plan Commission. I think you should think about it. It's 30 years.
Well, what we, yeah, so, so what we did is, the 2030 plan was adopted on, in 2009.
Yeah.
And it was on our schedule to review it every 10 years. So, we had it in 2018 or 2019. We got feedback that it would be appropriate to wait for the census numbers, so we'll have that. And so, this is likely slated for 2022 to redo the master plan. So, maybe, because we reviewed it in 2018 without much-
I do recall that, but I just think it isn't looked at.
The land, maybe a land use plan or something to, maybe hone in more specifically on-
Chances are, very little will change in that, in some of those categories. But it's kind of what, what is current, what does, fits now. And we had an add-on, and there's a downtown master plan, which was slightly after our master plan, because Lang was still not sure what he wanted to do in 1990. But by 92, he's, he was off and running. We did the same thing again. We do a circle around downtown, is okay, no more for here. And he didn't like it. And in the end, he brought in everything he wanted, and we approved most of it.
And that might be actually in the 2022 updated comprehensive plan would be something that your group would be really, I think, critical to-
You know, it is kind of where, where is the end game?
Yeah.
Because you are, and that was the 83 and 984, to hurt back. Where was the end game? All 104 acres were going to be developed. And guess what? Within about 10 years, they worked. And the tax base, as I recall, there was about three or four million, and it went to 300 million.
One big issue, and I don't, again, I don't, we're not development experts. We'd be delighted to be participating in that and to help bring perspectives together to share in that. I think it'd be something we'd love to be involved in. One issue that I know we've talked about that would go to the sort of broader planning is lot size. And I think there's a, I know this is a super controversial issue, but I think one of the issues with the city is, it's expensive. Property values are high. It's hard for young families to move in. And I think a lot of, a lot of people that we've heard from who are involved in sort of residential development would really like to see an opportunity for some part of Delafield to be a dense, you know, one acre lots, denser population. And, you know, I have no idea what Hendrix is thinking about for that St. John's property, but, you know, that may be something to put on the table and, and start socializing, because I know there's a lot of opposition to that, too. I mean, there's, it's one of those, it's one of those trade-offs, right? It's the rural nature of Delafield versus, you know, can we, can we get people to build houses that young families with kids can, you know, enroll in Cushing? And, you know, that, that's a real issue. And we've been hearing that, you know, for about a year, I think, now, that that's a concern. We're not necessarily taking a position on it. But I just throw it out there. One of the kinds of things is, we plan and think longer term, we need to keep up the table.
And that specific issue can be addressed in a smaller chunk by looking at the land use plan.
So, as far as all these comments, it kind of leads us in the direction of, from a staff perspective, what we're looking to do is, the council approved some funding for a downtown market analysis. And in light of some things that have come up with St. John's and whatnot, and, and based on some discussions between myself and the city planner and the mayor, we are looking at coming before the council and entertaining the possibility of widening the scope of what that funding is for, and take a look at more of economic development strategic plan for the city, and see if there are some opportunities out there for minor tweaks to the land use plan and things like that, that would help us with our objective of, you know, balancing the budget and getting to a point where five years from now, we don't need another referendum.
You're here.
And in that direction, what we're planning on doing is, in February, holding a joint Plan Commission and Common Council meeting at the regular-
Oh, jeez.
-Common Council date. And Amy and I will have further discussions with you at that time about what we're thinking.
Sounds good. I don't know how we're socially distant for that, but we'll do it.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, that's all right. It's the least of our concerns right now, for a little-
So, just let me just say, we really appreciate, again, thank you for-
Sure.
-having us devoting your precious time to this issue when there's not a real issue, right?
Right. And that was the whole goal. We've been talking about this for a number of months, and this was supposed to be a gap where there really wasn't anything going on. And then last week, it all changed again, right?
Right, indeed, indeed. But no, this is great, and we really appreciate, and, you know, I have to say, I have noticed changing, you know, a change in the vibe, a change in the tone, and I think it's really positive. And so, you know, Tom and Kent and Amy, who's not here, but thank you, and we appreciate it. And we're really, really do want to emphasize our, our desire to help how we can. So, you know, call on us when, when we can be of use.
Sounds great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Okay, we will move on to number five, citizens' comments. Who would like to be the first person in citizens' comments? Julie, come on up. She, she beat you, Jackie.
No, I know, sorry.
A lot of people are saying Julie, so.
No, I'm not Julie.
Yep.
It dovetails off of these fine gentlemen with their comments work. So, good evening. My apologies. I am Judy Taylor. I am the-
Oh, Judy.
New executive director for Economic Development for Waukesha County. And so, I don't know if you've worked with Tim Casey in the past, but that is who I replaced. And so, I just want to thank you, and especially Kat and Tom and Amy for helping to approve the budget to work with the Center for Growth. So, we're excited about it. We met with Tom, Amy, and Kent the end of December. Had some really great discussions on economic development and the potential for us to work together. And so, a couple of the different ways that we might be able to do that and accomplish what was talked about tonight was the data portion. We do partner with quite a few different resources that have the availability to offer data through market analysis and other means. So, we'll be working with Tom and Amy and the team on that. We'll be creating a community profile, so we can hopefully attract the right businesses to the region and to, to your community here. We also would like to work through your chamber, because we feel like that's the best way to go, to offer those businesses our consulting services. We have a person and a half on staff who can actually work with all the differing businesses throughout the county, whether they're medium sized to small businesses, to help them. And in particular, we're wanting to do a webinar series for the downtown mainstream businesses that seem to be struggling the most, so to help them with some marketing ideas and to understand, you know, this new normal that we're in, and hopefully help them to market their businesses differently and better in this economy. We know it's a, it's a tough economy, especially the next few months, while we're all still in this COVID timeframe. We also provide opportunities for businesses to come to Delafield. So, we have an opportunity on the table where there is a business who's interested in making Delafield their home. And so, we'll be meeting with that business as well as with Amy to see if there's any land potential. And so, then the last thing would be the fact that we do want to be a resource center, because we have partnerships with probably at least 20 different organizations to be able to help with, like Ed mentioned, any kind of data and certain software programs that we can, we can utilize for any kind of growth or expansion opportunities. But in particular, the land use, the Waukesha County Parks and Land Use Division just walked through some of the software programs that they have. It's data from 2017, so it's a little bit old, but they're ecstatic about it, because it will offer the availability to have some land use planning tools right at your fingertips. So, there's a lot of things that we're hoping to bring to you, to bring value with, with the amount that you have invested in us and to be your partners as we go forward and help you with any of your economic development planning.
Cool.
So, that's it. I just wanted to introduce myself and say hi, and-
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, concerns? Kat knows how to get ahold of you. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to be next? There you go.
Would be a common councilman either way, whatever. Okay. Do you want her name, Steve?
Yes, please.
Jackie Leiden. I was going to take my mask off tomorrow, but if everybody else powered through, I, I will do the same. 1614 West Shore Drive, Delafield. I want to talk about something, I want to endorse what my friend and colleague Jackie Valby here said, that responsible, good ecology is good business. It's something I ardently believe, but that's not why I came down to talk to you tonight, although, believe me, that's something I'll be really interested in discussing, noting, and participating in, in this community. One person's responsibility might be another person's exploitation. Words, words mean something, and so do symbols, and that's why I'm here tonight. I think all of us can agree that we watched in horror at what happened in the nation's capital on January the 6th, as it was besieged by domestic terrorists. My husband was in that chamber, taking pictures for his newspaper. And for our family, as it was for all American citizens, I think it was a long and harrowing day. And the reason that I bring this to Common Council tonight is because I think that, wittingly or unwittingly, we have a connection we wouldn't want, if we thought about it, to what happened in the nation's capital. And by that, I'm referencing, referencing the Gadsden flag that we've chosen to fly downtown in our community park. Symbols change over time, they just do. And when I saw that flag carried by the rioters and used to beat policemen over the head or seek out Vice President Pence, I thought, the time has just come to retire this as any kind of responsible municipal symbol. We wouldn't fly the Confederate flag. We wouldn't fly a swastika. And you may say, but this flag has, has revolutionary history. And it does. But, as I just said, things are mutable. And what we see it as now is what we saw it as a couple weeks ago, and what we are likely to see it as with the rise of this kind of vigilanteism going forward. So, the Gadsden flag, to me, is not, it is, it is in the purview of a private citizen to put on his bumper sticker or fly, as my next door neighbor does. I may not like it, but I would defend his First Amendment right to do it. But Delafield isn't a private citizen. And I keep thinking, as I walk down our path to Cushing School, Alonzo Cushing, revolution, Civil War hero, what would he think if he saw a flag that had become associated with this kind of sedition? Would you give your life for people who were going to then write, murder the media, we're coming for you, justice is us, all this anarchy? And think about the corporate boycotts, that something like Project Lincoln is doing against some of the big finance companies, or even Southwest Airlines, for flying those people to Washington. Is that the kind of message, we, when you keep talking about development in Delafield? Do other communities fly the Tea Party flag downtown? I feel that it violates my 14th Amendment right to equal protection under the law. I am offended by that flag. But most of all, I'm really disappointed in us at this point. And I think the time has come to lower it. I do think of my school days. I do think of how it's changed. I don't want it to become a potent symbol of hatred, which unfortunately, it already has. So, that's why I came in tonight. I would like you to please think about it. I understand that people will have different ideas about it. We're not in control of how symbols change sometimes. I mean, white supremacists use the, oh, you know, I can't believe I did that, use the okay symbol. It's not, symbols are fluid things. But we can have a voice, I say, for inclusion, to avoid any taint of white supremacy and racism, and give it a respectful farewell. So, that's why I came down, and thank you for listening to me.
Great, thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll move on to number six, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I, so move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? Okay, on to section seven, board committees and commission reports. 7A, Lake Welfare Committee. Mr. Kason?
Yes. Last week, last week, at the committee meeting, we had discussed a proposal for a zoning change to try and limit the amount of development that can develop a hard surface for lakefront properties, and we'll be bringing that to you next time. Basically, the city currently has no zoning limitations, I shouldn't say zoning, has no limitations in our codes to prevent people from hard surface, impermeable surfaces near the lake, and we'll be bringing that forward next month.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, 7B, Library Board.
Actually, I was just looking over our minutes. I'm the secretary, so it's handy I have them. We had a meeting last week on Tuesday evening, and everyone was there. The library is still in a modified open system, and our, we are considering, we have set a date, a goal of the 1st of March, but it's a fluid date of being able to at least have more of an opening, perhaps the adult book section. We're just not sure, but that's our goal. So, we set that out. The library has also applied for and received a grant from PBS Wisconsin for some programming, and it's about $1,000 grant with some tech support. So, that's pretty cool. We have completed the first wave of interviews for a new head of our youth services, which is very important. And there will be, there have been- And there will be, there have been nine preliminary interviews and three going forward. So it's kind of exciting. And there are, you know, other things, if you want to look at the minutes when they are officially posted, I will direct you to the Della Field, City of Della Field website. Our next meeting will be not until February 16th for some bookkeeping reasons, at 6:30, and you can join us via Zoom.
Great, thanks. Just a question. The head of youth services, did we have somebody that would retire or somebody leave? Just curious if you know how that position opened.
Yeah, well, that should be in... It's been an opening about which, you know, we've been aware for a couple of months. So it's not a new one.
Somebody left?
Yeah, somebody, I think it was a retirement. We had a couple of people, like, switch over. So, but yeah, we needed a new head of youth services, so.
Great, just curious, thank you.
Yeah, it's all right.
All right, 7C, Park and Rep Commission, Mr. Grimmer.
Parking rep meeting last week. The discussion was primarily around the Hawthorne Farms development, the parks within the development, or park... The paths within that development and a discussion on whether the paths are better off private paths or public. Other than that, that's about it, a small agenda. I refer you to the minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, 7D, Planning Commission, Iker.
Yeah, our last Plan Commission meeting in December, December 30th, actually. One item of note is what Alderman Grimmer just referenced, and that is a preliminary just presentation on a potential housing development just north of St. Joan of Arc's church. That's known as the Knopf property. Bill and Barb Knopf have owned it for quite some time. And there was a similar development that was approved and just awaiting development about three years ago that never came to fruition. And now we've got Seetman Development is looking at trying to make that happen. So they're moving through the stages, so just pay attention to future agenda items as far as what we're bringing up and what we're talking about. And so I'd expect maybe we'd see something like that in our next meeting, but that's it for Plan Commission.
Great, thank you. All right, 7E, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron.
Well, the minutes are attached, but the one thing I'll highlight, we have a budget of $10,000 that we slated to support events in downtown Della Field, and we actually helped with the Della Freeze, and that was right on the theme of what we want to do. We're trying to bridge these businesses over. I know we spend our money putting heads in beds at the hotels, but we've really cut back on our internet marketing right now, just because there aren't the funds. But a reporter called me on it, so now you'll see something in the paper, and he wanted more examples than that. Well, we don't have them yet, but we want to support some of these little events that safely bring people to downtown Della Field. And I have to admit, I walked around, I didn't know that many people, so I think it was effective at bringing people from out of town to visit during the middle of the day. And there were just enough people, and most of the businesses were being patronized. So that's the gist of what we talked about.
So was it $10,000 budget, and some of that budget went to Della Freeze? Some of it will go other places?
It hasn't been dedicated yet because we want to use it to really make sure something happens. And the Della Freeze folks, they approached us for 1,200 bucks only a month ago, and we took it out of that fund.
Got it, got it.
We just wanted to highlight that that really worked well. We thought it was worthwhile.
Great. Okay, you are up again with Public Works.
Public Works, there wasn't much on the agenda. They were just dealing with the paving budget for this year. I want to note that they're actually shrinking the size of one street, which I think is good. It's not a heavily-used street, so that's Lakewood Court. The other thing is they want to modify the bidding procedure a little bit for the parking lot over here because they feel that there's some of the contractors that normally would just bid smaller jobs would maybe get a better price. So that was discussed in the minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to eight, Mayor's Report. No mayor's report tonight. Number nine, New Business. 9A, Proposed Distribution Easement to be Granted by the City of Della Field to Wisconsin Electric Power Company on the city-owned property at 218 North Cushing Park Road, tax key number DELC0793-990-002, to service the solar generating facility on the city property and the neighboring Delhard property for consideration of $3,500 payable to the City of Della Field. Tom?
Yeah, typically with installation, we would have expected to provide them a no-cost easement to service our facility. At the same time, they approached us about cutting through our property to get to the Delhard property. It was a shorter run that way for them, cost savings for We Energies. And from the city's perspective, it doesn't have a significant impact on the property since there was already an ATC easement running through the property, and this immediately parallels that. So I was able to negotiate a payment of $3,500 initially. We Energies was asking for no-cost easement, and with that, I would recommend approval.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
All, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, passes? All right, we'll move on to 9B, Vouchers. Payable report for reporting dates 12/22 to 1/18/2021 in the amount of $364,785.64 for accounts payable and $77,372.75 for payroll.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, passes? Okay, number 10, Report of City Officials. A, 10A Administrator.
Yeah, just one quick report. We were pleased to find out that the City of Della Field did receive an additional allocation of routes to recovery funding. It appears that what the state did is all the unused funding from municipalities that didn't use the full amount was reallocated to any municipalities that claimed amounts above and beyond the original allocation. And that was done on the same basis as the original allocation based on population. So we did realize an additional $12,000-plus of funding, which was more than a 10% increase from the original funding. So I know when it came in, our new treasurer, Amy Bookman, she was very excited about it, so. Hope you are too.
I do. Great.
We'll take it.
Yep.
Okay, 10B, Clerk.
Another quick note, the administrative support assistant position that we had approved at the last meeting, I put the ad out on January 6th. I actually used Indeed this time as one of the sources, and I got a vast majority of my applicants from there. It's about 5 o'clock today, I have about 63 applicants already.
Oh, my gosh.
Deadline is January 31st, and with a hopeful start date sometime towards the end of February.
That's amazing.
There's not like an extra comma or zero in there, or something for the salaries?
What's that?
There wasn't a typo on the salary that maybe attracted so many?
No.
Okay, good.
Quantity's good, but quality counts.
A lot of people looking for work at this time.
Good for us.
Great, thank you. Okay, 10C, Treasurer. November 2020 Treasurer's Report is in the packet, I'll refer you to that. 10D, Council Request for Future Agenda Items.
I'm going to request that we have a discussion and possible action to remove the Gadsden flag.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we will move on to 11, Correspondents. Refer you to that. And number 12, Matters for Possible Closed Session. Common Council May Convene into Closed Session Pursuant to the Provisions of Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) Considering Employment, Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, more specifically regarding the city administrator, director of public works, the council will convene into open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the adjournment. When we come back, all we will do is adjourn, just so you are aware.
So you need a motion to go into closed session? I'll move.
I will second.
Roll call vote, please. Older person's the logo.
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Kason?
Aye.
And Iker?
Aye.
Motion passes.